Are we ready to go?
We have the planner, the attendee, and it looks like we have all members.
Okay, I'd like to bring this meeting to order. Will the staff please call the roll?
Yes, Chairman Lefal.
Present.
Vice Chairman Hoag. Vice Chairman Hoag, do you mind unmuting yourself? Vice Chairman Hoag.
Present.
Thank you. Mayor Hughesman.
Present.
Thank you. Board Member Brinkerhoff.
Present.
Thank you. And Board Member Kuhn.
Present.
Thank you. Tonight, the city staffs that are present are Jason Rogers, Community Development Director, Matt Hader, Deputy City Attorney, Jennifer Jones, Principal Planner, Stacy Wassenger, Planner, Tricia Mason, Community Development Manager, and myself, Alexa Alum, Administrative Specialist.
Thank you very much. Does any board member have any discussion pertaining to the minutes? If not, I would like to call on Board Member Brinkerhoff for a motion to approve the minutes, please.
A motion that we approved the last meetings minutes.
Board Member Kuhn, could you please second that?
I second that.
Okay, Alexa, could you please call a vote?
Yes. Board Member Kuhn.
I second that. Sorry, I guess my phone's being weird.
Oh, no, no, we're going through the voting now.
Say yes this time.
What was that?
Say yes this time.
Yes.
Thank you. Board Member Brinkerhoff.
Yes.
Mayor Hughesman.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Hoag.
Yes.
And Chairman Lefal.
Yes.
Thank you.
I believe the minutes have been approved. Before we begin our public hearing, I'd like to remind the board members to use the hearing only to ask questions and not to express opinions or indicate how they may vote on any matter. I would also like to remind the applicants that in order for your application to be decided in your favor, it must be supported by at least four members of the board. Any motion to approve an application that fails to achieve or concurring votes shall be deemed a denial without further action. Will the city attorney please introduce the first case this evening?
The first case this evening is, pardon me, AV-1654-07-20. Eugene Girkoff, on behalf of Victor Nikolenko, is requesting the following variances for the property located at 5560 Locust Street, Zoned I2 Medium Intensity Industrial District. One, north side building setback variance of 15 feet to allow a five-foot setback. Two, rear setback variance of 20 feet to allow a five-foot setback. Three, north and south buffer yard depth variance of 15 feet to allow five-foot buffer yards. And four, fence setback variance of 20 feet to allow zero-foot fence setback from Locust Street. On behalf of the city this evening, the case will be presented by Ms. Stacy Wassenger.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hader. Will the planner have any, present the case, please?
Good evening. Alexa, can we get the presentation up, please?
Yes, sorry, I'm just having a little bit of technical difficulties. Tricia, do you mind allow screen sharing, please?
Good evening again. So, my name is Stacy Wassinger. I'm one of the planners here, and thank you all for being here, Chair, members of the board. This is my first time presenting to you all, even though I've been a planner with the city for a few years. I think you can tell I'll be here. The question here is 5560 Locust Street. Next slide, please. Okay, all information pertinent to notice and publication is in the record, just for reference. Next slide, please. So here's the site summary and vicinity. So this is 56th Avenue and Locust Street. The lot size in question is approximately 12,000 square feet, and the current zoning is I2. So this is an undersized lot for the I2 zone. It was zoned back when it was annexed into the city and has always been undersized for the I2 zone, which would require normally a 50,000 square foot lot. It is currently vacant, and the future land use plan for this site is industrial distribution. A little bit of background on previous cases on this site, there have been two previous requests for setback variances in 1976 and 2007, both were granted, but they were never, the property was never developed. And over the years, the I2 zone and some of the setback standards have changed. And so this request is sort of to update the variances to accommodate the development of the lot to an use under the current requirements from the I2 zone. So next slide, please. So here's just the future land use map showing that it is the entire future land use there is an industrial distribution. Next slide, please. So here is just that aerial again, and it, and to give you a little bit of context here, this area is sort of a mix of residential and industrial uses, although the majority of it is zoned industrial up towards 56th Avenue there. The property to the immediately adjacent to the south is zoned R2 and developed residentially. Other, like on the corner there, the southwest corner is a residence, though most of the area again is on I2. So it's sort of an area in transition in this space. Next slide, please. So this chart is meant to, this chart and the diagram on the next slide is to sort of give you an idea of their requests here, and then the overall standards for development in the I2 zone. So this, the proposal in the concurrent development plan does propose to meet the front setback and the south side setbacks to that property that's residentially zoned. And a number of requests for variances to other standards on the north rear and the northeast and west setbacks. Next slide, please. Just to show the visuals a little bit more helpful here. So the width of Locust Street is 100 feet, and it's 120-foot lot depth. Requirements here, if you were to look at the red bounding box there, that would be the buildable area if all I2 set buffer yards were met, including a 50-foot setback to the south property line, because that is residentially zoned, that property to the south. A 20-foot setback to the front, a 25-foot setback to the rear, and a 25, I'm sorry, 20-foot setback to the north, to the side. In addition, the land development code requires 20-foot depth buffer yards to residential zones or uses. And so that would be required on the, both the north and the south sides of this property. And so the request there, you can see from the blue bounding box, is the, what the requested variances would allow. So it would still maintain that 50-foot setback to the, to the south, from the 20-foot setback to Locust Street. But then it would allow five-foot setbacks to the north and east, to an alley that's behind the property. And then a five-foot depth buffer yards instead of those 20. So the, and then in the fourth request is the fence setback variance, which there's an existing fence that along the entire property. And so the request from the applicant has been to let that, let there be a solid fence still on Locust Street, when normally the land development code would require a 20-foot setback for an industrial zone to have a six-foot fence on the front side. And so in the analysis in the site, the staff report, the analysis from DRT and staff, we found that the, generally speaking, that the request for the setbacks, so the north side yard setback and the rear yard setback, due to the depth, the size of the lot, and the size of the proposed building, which is approximately 4200, 4300 square feet, that that is a normal-sized building and normal-sized use for the for the zone. And so that allowing those building setbacks will allow the property to develop this site to a the normal standard for a I2 lot. This is an undersized lot that the variances would allow for that. And in addition, the buffer yards would also allow that, and for all of the site onsite circulation and parking and things like that, that would be required to develop the site, that it allows the space for that to occur as well. And then for the fence setback, the concern of allowing a zero-foot fence setback was that, in part for things like clear view zones and for for like stacking and potential traffic hazards, so as people are exiting the site, if there's a solid fence that it might block views and things like that, as well as not allowing then for street yard landscaping and those other kind of standards that would typically be required. And so the staff recommendation in the staff report about looms, a suggested different variance of 10 feet rather than 20 feet, so it still allows for the property owner to additional, a little bit there and secure their property, but also would allow sort of for that, for the clear view zones to be free of obstruction when cars are exiting and entering, as well as landscaping and street yard interaction with Locust Street to occur. So just kind of describing that in context of the site and the the potential requirements and variances here. Next slide, please. And so kind of going through that a little bit, that the DRT analysis does acknowledge that the small lot size is the hardship that is created, that makes it hard to meet all of the setback and buffer yard standards for this lot and still develop to a normal-sized I2 building and use. And the proposed variances would not create substantial impacts to adjacent property in that, or meaning the 50-foot building setback and kind of buffer a little bit to the north and south with those five-foot buffers. And also, part of the staff recommendation is a condition for the buffer yards to include a solid fence on the north and south property lines to sort of additionally add that the intent of the buffer yard, so that they are there, even though that depth is being decreased, that there is still that meeting the intent of the buffer yard. And, slide please. So the approval criteria for the, for variances, so the, most of the lot does create a hardship that lends itself to variances, meeting this approval criteria and meeting the hardship criteria. The hardship would not be self-imposed, because the created long before this property owner developed it, and it was zoned initially when the lot was undersized. And the variances would not be of substantial detriment and will be mitigated, and that's kind of the the impetus behind the, including a fence on the north and south property line to sort of mitigate some of the impact that might occur from other, from having a five-foot buffer yard rather than a 20-foot buffer yard to those properties. And the variances would not change the character of the I2 zone, in that it's not facilitating or allowing any kind of or building that might not be allowed in I2 zone otherwise. Next slide, please. And so the required public notification was made and was done in conjunction with the requirements of the resolution that allows these remote hearings for adjacent property owners to notify. Staff didn't receive any comments or contact from any members of the public of this case. And next slide, please. And so the DRT recommendation was to approve the building buffer yard requests as presented, those depths with conditions, so variances one, two, and three that are listed in the agenda and in the staff report. And the recommendation of a 10-foot fence setback variance rather than the 20-foot that was requested, and also with conditions, which will be on the next slide, please. So the conditions that we suggested with variances one, two, and three is that the variance is granted for the specific request made, and any deviation will require an application hearing before the Board of Adjustment. And there's that recommended condition of a six-foot screen style fence on the north and south property lines to enforce that buffer yard, the intent of a buffer yard requirement. Next slide, please. And then the conditions for variance four recommended are the same, that this is for the specific request made and any deviation requiring an application and hearing that the fence that shall meet all other requirements of the LDC. So it's just, just that 20-foot setback to a 10-foot setback. Next slide, please. And so with that, staff will conclude our presentation. They'll be able to answer any questions. The applicant is also present, if you have any questions for the applicant.
Thank you very much, Stacy. Appreciate that presentation. I will go through the staff now and call the board, excuse me, and call on each member individually with any questions which you may have, or Ms. Wassinger, did I, I got that probably way wrong, but.
No, that's right.
Well, that's good, thank you. Board Member Kuhn, would you have any questions for staff?
I have no questions.
Board Member Brinkerhoff, would you have any questions for staff?
I do. The property currently has a solid fence on the front of the property, correct?
Correct.
What is, do you know what that setback is on that fence, where it's located from the?
The current, the current fence, it's a chain link with sort of a metal siding in front of it, and it is set right on the property line in the front.
Oh, that, so that is the property, so that's the property line where the current fence is.
Correct, yes.
Which, because I was looking on all the other property lines look like they are much further, like right up to the sidewalk. Not saying that is their property line, but that's where their current fences are. And his looks to be back, you know, quite a bit more. So that is the, the current fence is on the current property line, okay. That's, that was my question.
Anything else, Mr. Brinkerhoff? I thought they supplied us a rather nice picture of that fence in the packet, however, I can't seem to locate it right this second. Mayor Hughesman, would you have any questions for staff on this matter?
Well, my question is, what is the nature of the business that is going to go into the facility after it is constructed?
It's a granite fabrication or granite making, I mean countertops.
So will there be dust collection equipment located outside the facility?
Yes, so all of that will be part of the development plan review, all of the mitigation and things like that. So yes, they would be subject to those requirements as well.
And so would that equipment be located within the setback area that they're seeking a variance?
No, all of that, any of the manufacturing or, not manufacturing, but the processing would have to incur within the building.
Right, but typically.
Sorry.
Facilities with dust collection equipment, the equipment is located outside the facility in large vacuums or placed outside the building, and it sucks the dust out of the building and into filters before it exhausts the air outside. So my question is, are they going to have such equipment located within the variance area?
I don't believe so, but the applicant who is present might be able to better answer that question.
We can save that question for whenever the applicant speaks. I'll yield my time back.
Thank you very much for that question. That's a very nice question. Chairman Hoag, would you have any questions for this staff?
So there's currently a fence around the entire property, correct? And on the front fence that faces Locust, are we asking them to move that fence? Or is it going to stay as it is now?
There's that nice picture.
Yeah, so their, their request was to fence on the property line. The staff recommendation was to have that fence moved back 10 feet when the property is developed for the gate to be set back and all of that, for the, when cars are entering and exiting, that they'll be able to see out better since that's a solid fence.
So how many cars would they anticipate that would be entering and exiting this facility?
It is a, it is a relatively small operation. I believe they said they'd have two to three employees. So it wouldn't be a, a large amount of folks entering and exiting every day.
I guess I was just trying to think in the, when you visit the community, I'm not, I'm not sure on having them putting the fence to another 10-foot setback. I don't, I'm not sure that that's going to increase the visibility of any cars that's leaving, and it doesn't sound like there's going to be a lot of cars that are in and out of there. So I'm, I guess I would just kind of be interested in leaving it just the way it sets at this particular time.
Is there anything further, Ms. Hoag?
No.
Thank you very much, Ellen. I had some concerns myself regarding the fence and a couple of areas in the packet. Pardon? Some questions regarding the fences on the north and the south side of the property. In one area of the packet, it seems as though we're recommending a solid fence, which seems like a practical application, given the uses on the other side, people's homes. But in another area of the packet, it seems to say a screen style fence, and I wonder which style fence are we actually recommending on the north and south? Screen or solid?
My apologies for that, the terminology confusion there. The way the land development code defines screen style actually means solid. So it means screening the, the use. So it's solid is what we're recommending there.
Okay, that seems good. And then back to the picture, if you look on page 24, they do show you a mighty fine picture of that fence. Is it being represented that that fence is actually already 10-foot back, or is it in fact on their current property line, and everybody else down the road is wrong?
Based on the application and the information we have, their fence is actually on the property line. But they don't know that a survey was included with the, with the application, so it may be that it's not quite on the property line. Their request is to put it on the property line. My, I believe it is on the property line, and that that right-of-way for Locust Street is 60 feet wide. So there is some right-of-way on either side of the sidewalk there.
Okay. Then further in the packet, at one point, it seems as though staff has recommended to move the fence back an additional 10-foot. Is that what's being asked for approval, or is that a separate matter?
The, the staff recommendation is to allow a 10-foot variance, which would allow them 10-foot from the property line. So it would necessitate that fence moving back some to meet that 10-foot setback.
Well, it would mean moving it back 10-foot, wouldn't it?
Correct. If it's right on the property line right now, yes.
Okay, okay. I'll hold any further questions. May we please hear from the applicant? Oh, and thank you very much, by the way, Stacy. Sorry.
Thank you all.
The applicant has been unmuted.
Hello? Yes, I'd like to recommend, recognize Mr. Girkoff. Did you have any comments in support of your matter?
Can you guys hear me?
I believe we can.
Okay, so to answer some of your questions, the main reason for us to. Get down to these setbacks is. As Stacy said already, we have an issue with the size of the property. When we have a purchase of that land, it was one type of requirements. Now it's a little different. And as Stacy mentioned, we need as minimum the size of the shop that it was proposed or shown in the picture. As far as the dust collecting. Right now currently, currently we're using the parking industry equipment, which is a water jets or every, anything we do, it comes with water. So the only dust we might have is just from sweeping floors in the office. It's probably the biggest dust we might have. Everything is done with water. And if there's any manual work is done, everything will be done inside this facility, inside the shop. The only reason outside, we're trying to keep that fence on all four sides. The same that it was to get a little bit extra of space to maneuver inside the property. We're going to have about three, four maybe employees with owner of the shop. But we're not going to create much of a traffic because our employees come in eight o'clock in the morning and they leave at 4:30. And we don't go back and forth. We might have a delivery once a week and that's about it. As far as the moving fence, right now we have, I believe from the sidewalk, we have about five feet. To the fence from the sidewalk. Right now we have a chain link fence, fence and to avoid any traffic created by moving in and out. Weekend, we were proposing sliding gate, which will be open in the morning and will be closed afternoon. The biggest reason we're trying to keep the fence on the property is to keep the people, kids running around the property. Because we will have some equipment sitting outside. We will have some remnants of a material sitting outside. We don't want any damages. We don't want anybody get hurt. So this is the main reason we're trying to. Keep that fence plus we would, another reason is we try to keep it clean on our property. Currently, right now I'm doing once a week cleanup around the property because it's been getting a lot of. Garbage dump inside the property outside. So this is the main reason we're trying to keep that fence is for. For the purpose of being safe and clean. Another reason we're trying to push the building and get five feet instead of 20 feet. Is we need some space from residential to keep 50 foot to create that sound barrier or whatever the requirements are in there. And if fires the fence, we can comply with the city's request whether it's going to be screened, solid. I don't know what other requests. We can always comply with that.
Okay, did you have anything more to add to that? I'd like to give the board members opportunity to ask you any questions they may have. Board Member Kuhn, do you have any applica, questions for this applicant?
I do not. They were, they were answered. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Brinkerhoff, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Um, yeah, back to the original question I had is that fence on the property line? Because you, you presented a exhibit that had it eight feet from the side, from the sidewalk. Is that truly the property line or is the edge of the sidewalk the property line? I, have you surveyed the property, you know, to know exactly where that, that property line is? Because looking at your drawings. You don't have anything beyond your property line, you know, sidewalk, fence, neighbor's property. To indicate exactly where that property line is compared to the, to the, the site photos that we see.
The fence is, at my knowledge, by survey, is right on, on the property line. And enough to the fence, I believe I sent a couple of pictures. We have five feet of a green zone and then we have a sidewalk. So between fence and road itself, we, we have roughly eight, nine feet of space right now currently.
But is that, is that, is that fence the, trying to understand if, if that is eight feet and we need to move it back two feet or is that eight feet and we need to have a total of 18 feet? You know, are we moving another 10 feet from where it is or are we moving it two feet? Now that makes a, you know, a difference in my mind where that property line is.
The, I believe the. The city wants me to move another 10 feet off of the original measurements, what we have right now. So it will be 18 feet from the road. Right now currently it's eight foot. And. For me, I would like to keep it in the same area. And this, in my opinion, this, as far as I looked at it, I'm driving back and forth in this land, like I said, at least once a week. We do not create much of a traffic because people park on the side of the street. So for me to exit the property, I am right now. I'm having from the fence to the parked cars, we have at least 15, 18 foot, which is a standard size of the car.
Well, the concern I have is your neighbors, they're backing out the driveway. You have the fence up on the property line. They're backing out. They can't see anything until their, their tails in the, you know, in the aisle way. You know, kids running down the sidewalk, you know. That's the concern that I would have, you know, they can't see anyone, you know, shooting down on a skateboard until boom. And that's, that's concern, you know, that I would have with keeping it, you know, at the zero lot line. Just safety of, of the, of people in there. So.
So our current, our current fence is on the same line as the neighbors. We are all on the same line.
True, but the neighbors are four foot chain link fence. You can see over them. You can see past them. You're, I think what you're proposing is a solid fence. And I might be wrong. Maybe you are proposing a, a. You know, maybe a wrought iron fence that can be seen past so that the, the neighbors can see what's, what's coming down. Maybe that's an option is to have one of the wrought iron or. Wrought iron type fences and they're not made out of wrought iron anymore, but they look like it. Have that type of fence, you know, turn and, and go down to the, you know, the property line. You know, I'm just throwing out some ideas there. So, but those, those are my questions that have been answered.
Yeah, right now we have chain link fence. It's covered with sheets of metal, which will be removed after the construction is done. For, for the view, we don't want to keep it completely closed. I want it to be open. I want it to be viewable from this tree. We're just going to fix it up what we have right now. So it'll be totally see-through. It's either chain link or wrought iron, whatever will be perceived limits. As far as the exiting and I know exactly what you're talking about. To make a safe exiting from the property, there's plenty of space. And this was another consideration just to keep that. Right now we have a chain link fence. And if it's possible, we would like to keep that. We can fix up the broken parts to make it presentable and looking new. But as far as the creating any problems getting out of the property, I think it's not going to create much because you can see through. And another thing, like I said, we, we don't have traffic, traffic. Like I said, it's going to be, you enter one time, it work eight hours and you leave. That's about it.
I believe that maybe the, the staff can correct me, but I don't believe chain link is allowed in, you know, for fencing. So I might be wrong on that, but I'm just pulling that from memory. But. No questions, no, no more questions for me.
Thank you very much, Mr. Brinkerhoff. Mayor Hughesman, would you have any questions for the applicant?
No, sir. My question was answered. Thank you.
Chairman Hoag, do you have any further questions for the applicant?
Um, no.
Okay, well, Mr. Girkoff, it's interesting. I don't think we've ever truly established. Where the fence is or is not. I'm looking at exhibit 24 right now. Obviously it is not in alignment with the fences. I was just there today. It, 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 none, none of the fences on that street align actually. Give it that. Also, just as a side note, because I'm going to come back to the fence. The, the trash picking details, a little shy because there's a big pile right up by that dream, green trash can of various liquor bottles and stuff that probably doesn't need to be there. So, so. I, I think we have a consensus on the first three issues, but, but this fence issue is, is still bothering me a little bit. I, I, I guess everybody is satisfied with their questions. Do you have anything more to, to add to that, Mr. Girkoff?
Yeah. Just to correct myself on the fence lines, yeah, there is a lot of different type of fence. And I completely agree with you. On the other side of the street, we have just a zero plank fences and there are all kinds of very variances on it. But the reason we, like I said, we will try to keep it just like you said, if you've been there today, that's after the weekend. I usually come end of the week and we're going to have more. It's, it's kind of a, a little side job for me. But as far as the keeping the fence, like I said, whether it's a chain link, if it's allowed, if it's not, we can get with anything else. The only reason we would try to keep it that way is to get a little more space to maneuver around. We're going to put all the parking lots on the inside of the property. So we don't take up any space on the street. And for that matter, I need to get in and out somehow on the property. So I can make a U-turn inside of my property and not making this on the street. So we're going to enter facing the property and we're going to exit the property facing the street.
And that seems like a really good idea.
So if there's. Should be, it should be one of the safest idea in my opinion.
Yeah, well, I, I have some experience with a lot, just two blocks over and, and. I don't know if those are really just little racetracks down through there because those people fly down that little hill. Quite briskly. So if, if no other board members have any further questions for this applicant, I would like to. Be done with him. Is there any other further questions for this applicant from the board? Hearing nothing. Let me get back to the thing. Of, it's my understanding, we have no members and, and thank you, Mr. Girkoff. I believe we're, we're done with you for the moment at any rate. I understand there's no response from the public and no request for any further hearings in this matter from the public. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, no written comments and no registrants.
Okay. So I would like to close the public portion of this meeting at this time. And bring in discussion if any board members would have any further discussion on this matter. Mr. Kuhn, do you have anything more to say regarding this?
I do not.
Mr. Brinkerhoff, do you have any further comments?
Yeah, one advantage of. Being at home, I can pull up, you know, Google streets and, and look at what other neighbors are doing. And they have several other industrial type lots. And they look like they all have at least 10 foot from the sidewalk. And all the, the neighbors' yards are, you know, either right up to the sidewalk or slightly off. So I'm just, I'm making the assumption that that sidewalk, inside of the sidewalk is the property line. If we grant the. The variance for zero lot line, that could be, it, you know, it could be right up against the. The sidewalk. And none of the other areas seem to have, you know, have that, you know, in the, in the neighborhood. So.
If I may, I'd just like to remind the, the board to limit themselves to the record before them in this matter.
Okay, sorry.
Well, thank you, Mr. Brinkerhoff. I believe I had a similar observations. Mayor Hughesman, do you have any final comments in regards to this matter?
Reviewing all the documents, I looked through and noticed that the area is in a transition from residential to industrial. So although I am greatly concerned about the residential neighbors to the south, part of our 2010 comprehensive plan did indicate that this area was going to transition towards industrial use and get away from the residential side. The fact that no residents did comment on this as far as objections go leads me to side in favor of the applicant.
Thank you very much, Mayor Hughesman. Vice Chairman Hoag, do you have any final comments you would like to express on this matter?
Well, I still come back to. Setting the fence 10 foot from where it is now. I, I, I just don't think that, I just don't think that it's necessary. I have heard Board Member Brinkerhoff, I want him to know that I heard as far as people coming out of the driveway. And things of that nature, but. I think the fence could stay where it is and not be moved back the 10 foot.
Chairman Lethal, if I may interject real quick, sorry. The planner has had her hand raised for some time that she may be able to provide some clarification on that.
Well, let's.
Okay.
I, I was unaware of that. I'm sorry, but let's give her a chance to speak. Stacy.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I just wanted to clarify that with all of the information we have, the current fence is on the property line or very near to the property line. I haven't seen a survey, but based on the, an exact survey, but the, the information in the, the site plan that we have and everything shows the existing fence is on the property line. So it may be like a foot or two off. But that it, it, just to clarify that. And then there was a question about chain link fencing. The clarification there is that industrial does allow chain link fencing. What it doesn't allow is chain link to be used as a. As a solid, so they can't put like slats into the chain link to get a solid screen fence, but you can have a chain link fence there. Wanted to clarify those two things since those had come up during the discussion. So if you, if anybody had any questions about that, answer. Otherwise, thank you for allowing me to clarify those.
Okay, would any of the previous board members with that new information have any further questions for Ms., for Stacy?
Well, I'm looking at the, the subdivision plat that we have in our packet. And it has the lot lines of all the properties. Being together and you look at the picture that was supplied of, you know, in their, in their packet.
24?
Yep, and they have, everyone else's grass goes up to the edge of the sidewalk. Now. I'm just, since there is no survey. I mean, if, I would have no problem leaving the fence where it is. I'm just concerned is if that is the case, that the lot lines match the neighbor's lot lines, which the, the. The, the drawing, you know, indicates. That that fence is now going to be right up to the sidewalk. And that is, that's my concern. If it is where it is, I could live with that. But just looking at, you know, the picture. If it is where it is, I could live with that. But just looking at, you know, the picture that we were given, either that or everyone is encroaching onto the street. Or this, you know, in, you know, or the city's having the, you know, the grass that's part of this, you know, the right away of the street. Sixty-foot right away is what it's indicating. There's a rebar right on that corner, but that's my concern. You know, if that is eight feet from the edge of the sidewalk, you know, okay, that would be okay. But if it's right up to the edge of the sidewalk is where my concern is.
Well, my concern would be that the fence stays where it is. It doesn't move towards the sidewalk, but it stays right where it is.
That would be close to my best line of thinking to resolve this issue with the information we have on hand. I do think it is somewhat poor. We've heard different dimensions, we've got a picture. I don't think we want to approve anything that will move this fence any closer to the sidewalk.
I agree.
Mr. Brinkerhoff, is that your line of thinking as well?
If I, if I may interrupt, we do have, we do not have a motion in front of us yet for discussion.
Okay.
If you're done asking questions of staff, maybe you want to change the pace of this hearing.
Pardon me on that last part, Matt?
So if you're done asking questions of staff, then maybe you want to close the public hearing and consider a motion and have discussion on that.
If there's no further discussion on this matter pertaining to staff, I will close that portion of the hearing at this time. Is there any further discussion? Hearing, no, I'm closing the discussion with staff on that particular subject. Thank you very much, Mr. Hader. So they have presented us with a number of motions, which-
Motion at this time is my understanding of our procedure, are you correct?
Uh, let me just kind of look this, you're probably correct.
Chairman Lefal, the mayor has his hand raised.
Oh, okay, that'll give me a minute. Yes, Mayor Hughesman.
First, I'd like to apologize for the comments I made. I was under the impression that the public hearing was already closed, and the comments I made were out of line for a public hearing if they were still open, so I apologize for that. Second, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the variances one through four with the specified recommendations from the development review team.
Is that a first on the motion, then, Mr. Hughesman?
Yes, that is.
May I call on another board member to present a second, given that particular information?
I second it.
Okay, I've got a first and a second on the motion. Alexa, could you please call for a vote on this matter?
Yes. Work by Mark Kuhn.
I vote for it, yes.
Do you have any discussion on the motion previous to-
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Chairman Ho?
Right, I think I'd like to discuss this, so I'm sure that I understand what Mayor Hughesman is in his motion.
Okay, please bring your matter of concern, and if we could be directed to the page in the packet that that motion is actually on, that might be helpful.
So, the way that's, so if I understand it right, we would be doing the variance one, two, and three, and four, which would include the extra ten-foot setback. Would that be correct?
I can't answer that question right at this moment. I don't have that in front of me, that particular version of the motion. Perhaps somebody from staff could be, okay, here we are on the motion page. I believe that's-
The way I understood, the way I understood the motion, it was one, two, three, and four. And four includes the ten-foot setback where the fence would be moved. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, my motion was to approve dear variances one, two, and three, as well as variance for, variance for the motion is that the Board of Adjustment find that a ten-foot, ten-foot fence setback variance for the property located at five-five-six-zero Locust Street, contained in case AV one-six-five-four-dash-zero-seven-dash-two-zero, meets the criteria of the Land Development Code, and based upon such findings, approve the variance subject to the following condition. A, the variance is granted for the specific request made in the case, and deviation from this variance will require a new application and hearing before the Board of Adjustment. And B, the fence shall meet all other Land Development Code Section two-one-dash-seven-seven-three-one standards, including materials and height.
So my interpretation of that is the fence would be ten foot back from the property line. Is that your interpretation, Ms. Ho?
If the property, if the property line if the property line is the current fence, if that, then it would be ten foot from that. If the, if the property line is to the sidewalk, then you would have the eight feet. You'd only be moving the fence two foot, right?
I believe that is correct. It comes back to the same question pretty much throughout the hearing, is where is the right spot actually at? And apparently, nobody really knows that answer at this time. I would hate to have to have this gentleman have to come back and see us again. However, I don't think we truly have established that matter of where the fence is or is not. Somebody maybe has to get tape measuring, go over there and check. Certainly, that won't be done tonight. So Ellen, it appears by my interpretation of what's on page fourteen that the granting would give them a ten-foot variance. The recommendation of the original dimension, I don't have that directly in front of me. It's ten-foot variance from whatever the actual setback requirement is.
The actual setback is, I believe, is twenty feet. So, or if I'm-
I think that's correct, I just don't see, because I got such a disaster of papers here. It looks like twenty foot from the property line on this one page, which does not happen to be numbered, is what it states on here.
On, on page eight, the chart that we were given says the twenty-foot setback from the property line for spin setback on their page eight.
I believe that's also discussed on page eleven of the staff report.
So it comes back down to the question of is that fence in the right spot, and everybody else's down the whole block is wrong? Or is maybe that fence not truly ever on the property line in the first place? And they just said that looked like a good spot. Here's page eight. Okay, are you at the bottom of the page, Matt? Is that where you're picking that up at, on four, on eleven?
That'd be correct, Mr. Jefferson.
Jefferson, no, thank you.
I was chairperson.
Lefal, I haven't changed my name to Jefferson yet. So here, the applicant has asked for twenty. And the staff suggests ten. So I'm believing the motion that Mr. Hughesman has forwarded to us reflects that ten foot in from wherever the property line really is at.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay, Ellen, are you with this?
Okay.
That one, okay.
I, that's the clarification that I wanted.
What it, it would appear, my understanding of this matter is that we would allow them to place the foot, the fence ten foot inside the property line. Now, sooner or later, somebody's going to have to figure out where that's actually at.
Would it be better to vote on our motion and vote it down, and then put it from the, where the fence is versus the property line? Where the current fence is?
We have no idea. That could be off by any amount of distance. I don't think we should use that as a a solid reference point, really, the original fence. If it was supposed to be left in place exactly as, as it is right now, we would have a reference point, but we don't know that that's ten foot from anywhere. So it's hard to grant them a ten-foot variance when you don't know where you're starting from.
Yeah. Again, just taking, you know, what we were given with the picture of all the neighboring properties, I believe that the property line is the back of the sidewalk, and that's pretty common in, you know, most residential neighborhoods. That's where the property line, people's property line ends, is right on the edge of the sidewalk.
And that's how this was originally designed, so that seems to make logical sense. What might be in an industrial area today has nothing to do with when they put this plan together, perhaps some number of years ago, fifty or so, I'd suppose.
So then, in reality, what we would be approving, that they would move the fence two feet?
That's my understanding.
If the sidewalk turns out to be the actual line, I don't know. I didn't measure any of that that closely to tell, to tell that.
Is there such a thing that we could?
We've had to have people come back before, and it was on a property line issue of similar thing. The church over in Adams Heights specifically.
But if we approve the variance today, wouldn't that just put that on the applicant to figure out where his property line is, and then redo the fence per the code and per the variance we issued today? So it wouldn't be, we're just saying, hey, do this according to what we're giving you as a variance, so then they can figure it out. Because as they said earlier in the hearing, there has to be survey work done, at least that's my understanding. So if we're arguing about where the, where the fence is, we have no idea, but by us passing the variance now, it would shift the responsibility on the applicant to figure that out and do it per our variance and the code of Commerce City.
I think that's an excellent idea, Mr. Kuhn. It would shift the the responsibility to them to ultimately locate that property line. I believe the motion that's, that's in front of us now from Mayor Hughesman would call for the fence to be ten foot back from the property line. That's now, yeah, Ellen, that's gone to a gamble. Now, because, because nobody knows where that line is. So is it ten foot from the sidewalk? Is it ten foot back from where it is right now, assuming it's on the line? He's going to have to move it another ten foot back. I really think they ought to figure out where that where that spot on the earth is.
If you look at their, the drawing done by NFE Engineering Services, they have elevation points of the corners compared to the, you know, top of foundations for the building. Someone has gone out there and surveyed. It's not, we do not have that survey in this packet. But they have a survey, because they're calling it out, you know, twenty foot, three inches, while everything, you know, on that bottom dimension.
Which page are you on, sir?
It is page thirty in the packet that we have, sheet L1.
Well, I guess my concern is, the property is smaller than other properties in this you know, recommendation of properties of the that I've read. And so if you took ten foot from the fence line as a property line, that really does cut in to, again, the being able to maneuver like the owner talked about. So that was my only concern, that, because I'm perfectly happy with it the way it is, you know, but moving it ten foot in, if you're only moving it two foot in, I think the owner could live with that. But I don't know.
If you look at their site plan, they have provided on that same one, they have, you know, ninety-degree parking with twenty, just under twenty-foot driveline. So most vehicles can pull into that, do a three-point turn, and pull out with no, no problem, and not have to do anything with regard to the front of the building. They have a large area around the trash container that comes in. I'm assuming that they're going to have a truck in here, you know. Okay, garbage truck will have to back out, but that's going to, that doesn't matter at all where the fence is. So any normal vehicle, large pickup truck, can easily do a three-point turn inside and then pull out. So it's not like that dimension is going to matter at all with, when it comes to turning radiuses. You know, if he has a large trailer, that might be a little, again, that, where that dimension is, is not going to matter at all to the turning radiuses. Only thing it'll do, it will not have the twenty feet from the building, it will be down to ten feet. If, you know, if that is, we do have to move it, you know, the total of the ten feet. So they'll have eleven foot eight instead of the twenty-one foot eight to the, to the front of the building. So arguing that that helps them turn around, they have plenty of area to turn around in their parking lot.
I never was able to find that page thirty
I guess I just, if we don't have any, I mean, definitive on where the property line is tonight, will this always be a problem with this property and this, you know, with the city? You know, it's, is it here, is it here? That type of thing.
Would, whoa, okay, that's gone.
So.
Like I mentioned, if they move the property line ten feet, it should not, in my view, impact their operations at all. We're not asking them to decrease the size of their building. You know, we're just getting rid of their front area, don't have any elevation, so I don't know if that's their, if that's their- You know, we're just getting rid of their front area. Uh, don't have any elevation, so I don't know if that's their, if that's their, front entrance. I'm, I would assume it's towards the parking lot, but with no other information, uh, I can't tell. Um, they're gonna lose some green space on the, on the southwest corner. Uh, and whatever is going on in, you know, near their air conditioning, uh, screening wall and the grease traps underground anywhere, you know, uh, anyway, so.
Well, it's, it's still at this, at the same point. It, it seems, uh, illogical to move that fence back another ten foot beyond where it is. But, but at one point, they seem to be claiming it's on the property line. Uh, I would think this would be a matter of importance because i- if the fence is on the property line currently. And we're asking for him to move it another ten foot further into the lot, which is, is what this is beginning to sound like. Uh, that is to Ellen's point, uh, it, it takes a lot of room out of your lot and creates a big void along the road that's bound to turn into some kind of parking arrangement or something as opposed to a, a green belt. Mayor Hughesman, did you have a?
The, the way that I'm looking at this. The variance was looking for a zero-foot fence setback on Locust Street. That would give them twenty foot in between the fence on Locust Street to the edge of the building. That is based on the site plan with annotations that was provided within the packet. The DRT has recommended that we have a ten-foot variance, which would move that fence ten foot in from the property line. Looking at the way that the site map is done with the annotations, that would indicate that that's ten foot from the edge of Locust Street inward, giving you ten foot from Locust Street to the edge of the fence and ten foot from the edge of the fence to the edge of the building. Again, my recommendation in my motion is based on the recommendations of the development review team that proposed the, uh, uh, the motions that we are, uh, currently considering.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hughesman. So I believe, uh, that is, uh, what's shown on page fourteen of the packet. By approving this with the ten-foot setback, it does, uh, shift the responsibility to someone to figure that out. I, I'm not sure exactly who's gonna figure that out. To Mr. Brinkerhoff's, uh, point, they, they must have had some survey work done to get this, this nice diagram that they sent us, uh, without a page number. So somebody probably has got a pretty good idea. But under no means do I think that, that, that we should move that out to the edge of zero setback. That, that's not correct. So we're back to the recommended approval subject to conditions recommended by the DRT for a modified variance number four. The recommended motion. So I believe, uh, we may need to restart that vote again and perhaps move this forward. Uh, Mr. Hughesman, would you like to, uh, make the initial motion, please?
I believe there's already a motion and a second, uh, on the, on the table here. So if you're done discussing, then I think it's just a matter of coin for a vote.
Would anybody like to, uh, further discuss this matter anymore?
I had one other thing that I wanted to add. Also, I know that there was concern from some of the board members regarding traffic being able to pull from adjacent, uh, properties into the street and being obstructed by the fence by moving that fence back ten foot. That would give a motorist the opportunity to be able to see clearly under the street and not be obstructed by that, which further goes into why I feel that we should adhere to the recommendations of the development review team by amending the variance to ten foot instead of zero foot as requested.
Okay, and I believe that's the motion. We've got a first and a second. Um, I'd like to call for the vote on that motion. Alexa, could you please, uh, go over the roll?
Yes, thank you. Board member Coon?
I, a vote yes, approved.
Board member Brinkerhoff?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Hughesman?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Chairman Ho?
Yes.
And Chairman Lefell?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a vote. I believe the proposal was successful. Does any member of the board have any further business they'd like to address at this time? Seeing none. Would the attorney have any matters to bring up at this time?
I have no matters for you this evening. Thank you.
Would staff have any other further matters they would like to bring up this evening?
I have anything to add, to add at this time.
Okay, uh, Ms. Mason, can you give us the results of that and assure the applicant that he's on his way with an approval? Alexa, excuse me.
I believe that, um, you, Jennifer Jones was trying to speak.
I'm sorry, uh, Ms. Jones?
Good evening. I just wanted to let you all know that we would likely have a December board meeting. So if you would plan on that for December eighth. Um, I can't believe we're already talking about December. I don't know about you all. Um, and staff wanted to wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving since that we're already to the holiday season, but then we will see you shortly after that.
Well, well, thank you very much for that update. That gets our December plan figured out. Uh, so, so back to my previous, uh, question. Can we assure the applicant that his, uh, motion has passed and he's on his way?
Yes, we will.
Okay, well then if there'll be, uh, excuse me.
The motion passed five to zero, is that correct?
Yes, five to zero.
Thank you, and just, we wanna make sure that we, uh, congratulate the applicant and, and thank him for being here tonight also.
Yes, thank you very much. Uh, I hope they're happy with this, uh, outcome of this case. If there be no further discussion or further business to come before this board. I would, yes, Ellen?
No, I didn't say anything.
Okay, well, the little box went yellow around your picture.
Oh.
If the, if there be no further business to come before this board, I would like to adjourn this meeting, meeting, and thank you for everybody that attended.
Happy holiday.
See you in December.
Yeah, don't eat too much.